I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a special board meeting for facilities. And we're going to get started. We're going to have the pledge allegiance and after that will be the land acknowledgement. And then we'll proceed on. Let us down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll have the land acknowledgement.
I recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chacheno Muakma Karkin Oloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
All right, thank you. That was our student trustee. And now we will do the roll call from Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, sir. President Christian.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Not here at this time. Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present. I am waiting for a Zoom update before I can log on.
Thank you, trustee Reckler is present. Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Miles. Is not here at this time. And trustee Sampaña.
Good evening, present.
Our president accounted for with the exception of trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi and trustee Miles at this time. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. And we're going to go to, are there any public comments concerning the facilities? Before we get into the presentation?
We have.
We have on Zoom Ms. Christina Huerta. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Christina Huerta and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I'm speaking today because I was a part of the steering committee who was working on giving feedback to the district about what sure our funds needed to be used for. Let me start by saying that I'm very proud to work at Kennedy and serve our student population to the best of my abilities. And I just want to make sure that the board understands tonight if that rebuilding Kennedy be made a priority. I have seen as part of the steering committee, the passion that alumni and community members and staff, and most importantly, our students have about Kennedy. And our students deserve a campus that meets their needs. Not only the students, but the community. Last year, my advisory was excited because they got to meet with the architects and they got to see all the different models and they provided feedback about what they needed to better be served by our school. Our students to take ownership of this school where they spend most of their time. They provided all of this input about what students need and how and they did it knowing that they themselves would never get the chance to enjoy the campus. They were not thinking of themselves. They were just thinking about younger relatives that they have that will one day come to Kennedy. They were thinking about the new students who might enroll in the coming years. And they know that a new campus would have a wonderful impact in their education and the community. So far, our students feel that they have been neglected by the district. Kennedy has had the campus that it has for so many years and they travel to other campuses, playing sports or for other reasons. And they see the beautiful campuses at Pinole at El Cerrito and they deserve the same. I just need everybody to understand that Kennedy needs to be made a priority, that our students deserve classrooms with windows, that they deserve to have a soccer field so that football and soccer don't have to share the same field. They deserve a new library, green space. Being heard. Kennedy deserves to be a priority. So I urge you to make them a priority tonight. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. My colleague Ms. Huerta. Most of the things that I want to say, what I'll add is, you know, as an alum and being at Kennedy for the past 12 years. It is hurtful. The building that we currently have, it has outlasted its time. And yes, we can look to the other high schools that have been rebuilt. Some of us know that money for Kennedy was supposed to be rebuilt a long time ago. And what we do know is that money was taken from, some might even say stolen from Kennedy for other campuses in this district. And so when do you prioritize the students and the community that represent Kennedy High School? What about the elementary school kids that are coming? What about the middle school kids that are coming? The neighborhood is changing. When you come up and down cutting in the side streets, the community is changing. But yet Kennedy is still stuck where it's been stuck as far as the building goes. How do you think that we feel about walking in the building? Now granted, I'm an alum, so I still have an affinity and an affection. But what about new staff? Why do people even want to come and work at Kennedy? Why do people want to stay at Kennedy when Kennedy has been ignored and neglected? As it's been said a number of times by many different individuals, a value statement. It is a value statement. How much do you value more? So how much do you love kids? Now, I recognize that a lot of people on this board, you were not decision makers two, three, four, 10, 12 years ago. I recognize that. But you ladies and gentlemen are in the position that you are in now and that Kennedy needs to be prioritized. You need to come and listen to our students. They gave up time. And just like Ms. Huerta said, they knew that whatever was to come, they would not even reap the benefits of it. But they gave their time, their energy, their passion. And to, I'm not sure what the decision is going to be, but to respect our young people and what they gave of themselves during that period of time. So with all that being said, some things I won't say because they might be considered a little too harsh. However, Kennedy needs to be prioritized.
Our next public comment is Donna Phillips. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, hi. I'm a music teacher at Kennedy High School and thank you for meeting on this today. I just have to say I'm new and the students, they're just very close knit. They're very close to each other, really nice kids. They really want to learn. There is not enough space for them in the music building. And some of my students were sent to independent study and because there's not enough space at the school, you're sending many students to independent studies, you know, because you don't have space at the school because you haven't built it. And those students are devastated. I saw them last year coming off of independent study and they have to recover from it. So they really need a place to go to a school and be with the other kids because they're very social. Two more things, there are no windows in the music building and my students say they're feel claustrophobic. It's so outdated. There are no, there's like one outlet in every room. So we can't even use modern computers. You know, we take these trainings in the district for a universal design for learning UDL. We can't implement it in the music building because we don't have it. I'm projecting things onto, I don't have a screen. I'm projecting them onto like a wall that looks like burlap and the children can't even see what I'm projecting. So it would be really great to have our building updated. You made, you know, Dianza looks like it's, you know, these schools look like you've coated them in marble and you haven't bothered to rebuild Kennedy and we really need it. The kids are great. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Karen Armstead. Please unmute yourself.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. My name is Karen Armstead. I'm a special education teacher at Kennedy currently in my sixth year. And the very old building and surroundings are, they're a drain on morale. They're a drain on morale of the students who are already are very underserved in the district and they are getting a very clear message about how the, how society, how much society values them. They are getting that message in their surroundings every day. In classrooms that don't even have windows. In large areas of the campus that are just fenced off and unusable. And very, very dilapidated surroundings, day in, day out. And as my colleagues have pointed out, there are, there are facilities that are really inadequate for practical reasons. I recall as Ms. Huerta said, when the students were invited to take charge in, in planning for a redesign of the campus and then at the last minute, seemingly plans were called off. And then they were told, oh, we just don't have enough money. I had many confused questions. I was fielding after this. Well, why were the plans suddenly called off? We were involved up to this point and then why did they suddenly decide not to do it? And you know, I was entertaining many of those questions myself. Why? Yeah, why? We just can't for so little. Yeah, it's certainly time to redesign the campus and rebuild it and prioritize it. Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Stephanie Garcia Avila. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Good evening, board, staff and community. My name is Stephanie Garcia Avila, a former student trustee. And I'm here today to speak on Measure R. Board, our Richmond and Kennedy High School students have been asking for the bare minimum for years. Multiple students at Richmond High have brought up how their structure is bad. Many students have voiced that they want something simple as a window for their school. Actually, my school had to draw on windows on the wall to have a quote unquote window because we wanted one so bad. Studies have shown that student learning in classrooms with more natural light perform better than their peers in the same schools and classrooms with less daylight. How do we expect our students to learn when these schools are lacking the bare minimum? Not only is this issue being brought up, but also the lack of AC and heater systems. I want each of you to sit in a classroom at one of these schools during the summer and winter and see if it doesn't impede your success in that class. This board wants equity, but how can we say it's equitable when our low income students and schools look like this? We don't have the resources and we are expected to go into the real world like we know everything. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Laurel Herms. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. I'm also a teacher at Kennedy High School. I've been there for a few years now. And I would say the students are getting a message that's loud and clear. The message has been reinforced in a variety of ways. The grounds, as many of my colleagues have mentioned, are dilapidated. They're not usable in part. I really want to underscore the impact of no windows. Nearly every classroom has no windows. So very few classrooms that do have windows. And whether students are going into this environment or workers are going into this environment, going into a classroom that you're spending hours and hours and all day long with no actual light is incredibly crushing psychologically, as I believe someone else mentioned some studies supporting. It's frankly unconscionable that we wouldn't give the benefit to the students, to the staff, to anyone who walks in those doors of rebuilding this when so many other schools in the district have been rebuilt. Thank you.
And our last public comment is Andrew Wilkie.
Oh, great. That sounds good. My name is Andrew Wilkie. I've worked at Richmond High School now for, this is my ninth year at that school. Couple of things. First of all, it's amazing what the attendance is of a meeting that we get, not even really one day's work notice about. Yeah. Next thing. I just want, I hope you guys are taking a step back and look at what, what two places you're pitting against each other tonight. I presume that's what's happening tonight. I really don't know. But you were, you were pitting two. What sides of the city are you pitting against each other right now? We got them talking about, we need windows, we need this, this, the same. We both need these same things. And I get that we didn't all make the decisions and duh, 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 duh. But I know the need is there. The need is there. You go work in my classroom every day and see how you feel every day. It sucks, especially when you got 70 kids moving in and out of that room, doing work. So just, I just want to, the point I'm trying to make, it feels like we're pitted to, we're pitting, we're pitting the poor kids against the poor kids. But really, we all need it desperately. It is disgusting, the place we work in. My building is now the oldest secondary building in this district. My building, the music building at Richmond High School opened in 1953, something that was overlooked when we first started this process. Concerns I have right now, when we were on, I was on the, the reimagining committee, whatever it was called. A huge concern that came up was our school sits around 1500, always has sat around there for, for, for a very long time. Kennedy sits around eight, 900. The plan that was told to us was that they were, you, you guys or whoever is in charge, because I don't quite know, we're planning to build Kennedy to hold 1600 students and Richmond High to hold 1600 students. And I was like, why? The numbers don't make sense. The sizes just don't make sense. So if we got minimal amount of money and we're trying to build two schools the same size when one school doesn't have the same enrollment, I don't understand. Unless you're drastically trying to change this community and how it interfaces and interacts. Because my kids can't go to South Side. We just got asked to play something on the South Side and I'm like, hey, guys, who thinks they could come down here to this park after school one day so we could do band? And like, I don't know if my parents are going to let me. And that's the reality.
All right. I would like to thank everyone who gave public comment on the public comment session. And now we'll proceed on with the meeting and we'll go Dr. Hurst. So we have to do the agenda review and adoption. Any changes to the agenda? Motion?
President Christian, I'll move that the agenda is adopted as presented.
All right. It's been, it's been moved.
Smith Folds, second.
All right. It's been second by trustee Smith Folds. And to the vote. Trustee Sampaña.
Sampaña, yes.
Trust, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
All right. And I am a yes. And motion carries. And agenda is adopted. And so now we proceed on. Yes. Yes. Okay. So we have two speakers.
Hello, everyone. My name is Helen Burks and I'm a vice principal at King, a former vice principal from Kennedy for five years. And what I wanted to speak to has to do with impact. And specifically, I'm looking through the presentation for tonight as it was posted. I was looking at the quality of buildings and which building students are in most of the time. So something I just want to make sure everyone is aware of is that those buildings that are labeled as poor quality, which you'll see in the presentation this evening, all students at Kennedy High School have their core classes in those buildings. Those are our English learner, special education, math, world language, English and social sciences classes specifically that are in those rooms that are marked poor. In addition, the cafeteria, the place where all students eat are marked poor. I want the board to know that in my time at Kennedy High School, we had to have pipes replaced due to lead issues in the water. We had to have issues with asbestos remediation in one of the rooms. So I think when I, I want to have fleshed out what poor means. And for me, as a former environmental science teacher at El Cerrito High School, this is an issue environmental justice staring right in our face. We are not placing our students in healthy, safe environments to learn. And I want to make sure that it's understood that all students at Kennedy High School are in those exact buildings for majority of their time. Secondly, I want to make sure that it's understood that, is that 10 seconds? Thank you. That is the main point that I wanted to make the board, that the impact is deep. And that when we did take an inventory of student needs a few years ago, Kennedy has a disproportionately high number of students who are highly impacted by health and safety factors outside of school. So that needs to be part of our conversation, higher than any of the other schools, secondary schools in the district. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Randy Joseph. I am a resident of Richmond, a Kennedy High School graduate of 2003. And I also work at the Rise Youth Center as a health justice case manager who works with young people all across the city and in the Bay Area. Wanted to talk tonight about the plan to either renovate both or one of the other schools. I can't speak for Richmond High. I've never, I've only been there once or twice. I can't speak for that. But I've been to Kennedy on many, many of occasions, especially in the last couple of years. And it's troubling for me that it looks the same as it did in 2003. I don't even look the same than I did in 2003, but my, my, my school that I graduated from does. A lot of it is the same rundown buildings, the same rundown walls, the same, it's water issues that I remember having in 2000, the same cafeteria issues that happened in 2000, the same space issues that happened in 2000. Those, that this school needs a full remodel. I talk to youth every day and they talk about the school looking like a time machine, like they're living back in time. How do you expect for schools and students to be successful in a building that doesn't match what they're trying to learn for today? We talk about technology and innovation and inventing and going beyond. It's really hard to do that when they're sitting in buildings that are stuck in the past. And what we need to do is change this. A lot of things, safety issues. The same holes that I remember sneaking into school when I was cutting class is the same gaps that we have today. That needs to be fixed. So I hope that they'll look at what Kennedy and these issues need and support these people because they've been left off for a very, very long time, for far too long. Thank you.
Any other more, any other public comment? All right. Thank you. And now we'll proceed on, Dr. Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. President. This time we'd like to introduce Mr. Freeze from our maintenance and operations department, the chief. And then also Ms. Ellen Mihia Hooper that has a presentation prepared for us.
All right, well, thank you, President Christian, board, Superintendent Hurst, for having a special meeting tonight so we give a presentation on the facility's master plan around Measure R. And Ms. Mihia Hooper, we can bring her to the presentation. Yeah, the second slide. So tonight, we just want to give some background. So in June, on June 23rd of 2021, the board heard a presentation from the facilities committee, facilities group around the prioritization committee and recommendations from this facility committee on reprioritization of the high priority schools. The recommendation from the board was to prioritize Kennedy, Richmond and Stige as the highest ranking schools and to move Alvarado, Sarah to the bottom of the list. During that presentation, we talked about their prioritization, but also part of the master plan, there are more components of just the prioritization and or the rebuilding of Richmond High and Kennedy. There's also the studies for the HVAC study and a student housing component. Tonight, we're going to give you an overview of the work that was done by the steering committees on the rebuild for Richmond Kennedy, as well as the work we've done around the HVAC study and student housing component. Next slide.
So tonight's agenda includes a recap of where we are with Measure R and the overall budget, as well as those master plan, site master plan rebuild process that has been completed, the district wide initiatives and student housing and demographic overview, overview, and we'll conclude with the recommendation. So Measure R budget, Measure R was passed by the voters in March 3rd, 2020. It was for $575, as far as the overall millions included. One, and, and when you pass a bond, it doesn't necessarily mean that the bond money shows up instantaneously into an account. That money is acquired over time with each individual bond issuance. The first bond issuance, series A, was completed in 2021 for 75 million. So that would be our cash on hand. The remainder of the bond funding has not been issued yet. We typically do those issuances somewhere between a, a single year and three years, depending on a variety of factors, including where the housing market is because the, it's all dependent upon home values. So the only budget item that has been approved for Measure R funding is for the Kennedy's Fields Bleacher and Press Box Project, which was 6.6 million. The rest of Measure R has not been budgeted as of yet by the board. So if we look at what we've done with the high school master plans tonight, I'd like to acknowledge that in, in the building, we have HMC architects and then on, on the, on the line in Zoom world, we have H kit architects. We also have our cost estimator available for questions at the end of this presentation. We would like to thank them for their participation in this process. And the slides that you see coming forward, we've borrowed different graphics and things from both of these architectural firms. The purpose of the campus master plan was to really create a vision that reflected the educational program and had enough information in it to allow us to do a rough order of magnitude project budget. We do have to get it to a certain place for us to be able to have enough information for a cost estimator to be able to do that kind of estimate. And so we, we built the steps to be able to get to that point. It started with an investigation of what the vision of the educational program wanted to be with an emphasis on our CTE programs. It started with an investigation of what the vision of the educational program wanted to be with an emphasis on our CTE programs that wanted to be implemented at both campuses or have already, are already in place as far as Richmond and the pathways go. We, we met with a variety of stakeholders. We did an analysis of the assessments of the existing buildings. Those items were put together and prepared to create options that led to tonight with the different recommendations. Throughout the process, there were many different types of meetings that, that were conducted. There were several general community meetings as well as focus group meetings with individual departments at each campus. And the architects worked hard to be able to include student voice in different ways by conducting tabling at lunch. So they were available for students to come up to talk to them at lunch. We visited classrooms. We did surveys. So there were a myriad of opportunities for people to participate in the process. We also had two steering committees, one for each campus that we met with periodically throughout the process to report out the findings and to help guide the, the development of the plans. The architects with their partner engineers went out and evaluated the existing facilities. So this is for facility only, not necessarily how well these facilities were supporting the educational program, but purely on the structure, the, the finishes, the different systems that run our buildings, such as the HVAC systems or our low voltage and, and different components of the buildings themselves. Overall, we have ranked the buildings from poor to good. You can see at Richmond High, of course, the auxiliary gym is in the green color. It's brand new. And the, we did have several buildings that were in, in poor shape, which included the 100 and 200 and 800 buildings at Kennedy, as well as the portables at Richmond. From there, there's a, a variance across the rest of the campus of need that, that exists. And even in our fair buildings, we have significant numbers of, of items that need repair and update. Part of the other portion of the process is not only knowing what you have as building inventory, but what you are looking for as far as educational space. And that's where the facility space program comes in. So a space program is really a list of all of the different types of spaces. And you can see on the left of the screen, all the summary of most of the types of spaces that occur in a high school. High school is a very complicated building type. We have over 100 different types of rooms that make up our, our high schools. And so as we looked at these different types of spaces, we, we started with the educational specification that was approved by the board. I believe back in 2017. And from there moved forward to customize the, the space program to match each campus and their academic offerings. We also talked to the different campuses about their goals and how they address things like support of students, what kind of mental health and, and outside providers that they have in, come in. And those are the kinds of things that were customized for each school site. From those different documents came forward, options to be able to reconstruct the two campuses. We had three options for both campuses. The first option on either one of them included a renovation scheme. Then at Kennedy, we had two new construction schemes and at Richmond, they looked at the possibility of reusing the main building versus trying to reuse just the gym in the hybrid scheme. And then the mostly new is, is completely new, except for the auxiliary gym, which is obviously a brand new building. So those are how the, the different options worked out. All of them included first and second story buildings. And the idea was to be able to get something that was able to accommodate the full educational program that was shown on the previous slide. From there, once we had the plans come forward, it was time for cost estimating. All of the master plan options were estimated by Cummings, who is a, a well-known cost estimating group. We had the same cost estimator do both campuses in order to establish consistency across the, the two different master plans. And we worked on today's price in today's dollars with escalation being applied to the, to the different schemes, depending on the timing that was allotted for each scheme. So depending on the options, because we would be working within an occupied campus, it varied because you would, you would have to build certain things before you could close down another part of the campus to build other things. Based on a, a past trends and yearly escalation was applied to the midpoint of construction for each of those phases. Growth projects though are starting design in 2020. That's probably not going to happen. And so, but it was the only starting place we could reasonably do to be able to know what we were looking at for a total cost. Most likely, we won't be able to do both projects simultaneously. And there were market conditions beyond what we anticipated when the master planning process started. The supply chain and global distribution has, has plagued us for the last two years. We have experienced it across all of our projects. And we're, we're continuing to try to find the best pathways forward and continue to look at different projects and, or products and systems to be able to address it, but it did influence the overall costs that came back from our cost estimators. And that leads us to the rough order magnitude of what, what was considered for both of the campuses. Unfortunately, we find ourselves in the place we too often find ourselves where there's a lot more that we would like to do than we have funding to do. This came forward. And you can see from this slide that our project costs are somewhere between the high 300s to the high 400s for any particular scheme. This, of course, if you add the two together, do not, it does not allow us to do both campuses as a full rebuild within the bounds of the Measure R dollars.
Before we go on, we wanted to take any questions in this portion of the presentation. And we have some options here was implement the full reboot, rebuild of one of the campus. Or do you find improvement projects for each campus within available dollars and measure R?
Thank you very much. I think trustee Reckler is first today because I was first in the last. So do you have any questions?
Sure. If I could get a clarification of how many or what the time would be at, at this, at this point for questions.
I just, please ask four questions.
Okay. So thank you very much for the presentation. I want to start on page three. And I'd like to talk about HVAC and whether you could consider, and if you would consider or know about energy service agreements for HVAC systems that are modeled on the solar energy model that we have at all the schools that are over the parking where, you know, it's basically a lease agreement and you're not paying upfront, but you're making it on the backend.
Is your question, have we considered doing solar projects, energy renewable projects? Though we're on a lease option?
Yeah, apparently there are some, and I don't know if they apply to school districts, but there are options for HVAC that are very similar to the solar where it's like a lease. You don't pay upfront for them. So some of the quotes that you have in here, like $140 million for HVAC renovation or things of that sort. There might be a different way to finance it, not through bond funds.
We haven't made that kind of consideration to look at the projects like that, but that is a funny model that could be looked at. Certainly it's, it's interesting a way to defer the cost and get the upfront improvements done.
Okay. So that's the first one. The next one is just to be clear on student housing, this includes, and oh, I might want to save this. Are you going to touch on the increase? All right. I'll save that. Okay. I'd like to flip over then to page four and talk about money, the budget. So for Measure R, we have these estimated tax rates here that go out to 2052. And so from this graph that you have here, what's, what's the moral of the story on this multicolored graph here on tax rates?
So I would like to defer some of that to our advisor, K N. I did have conversations though with them about the current tax rates. And if the question is around available dollars and how soon we'd have available dollars, I could comment on that.
So, I mean, when I'm just trying to, sorry, what I'm trying to pull away from this is, you know, I mean, from what I see from this graph is that I don't see a tax rate going down anytime in the near future is the bottom line until, at least until 2052.
That is correct. We do have some projections that I could send to the board that would show that the tax rates out into the future for this issuance for Measure R.
Right.
Based upon the projections.
Okay. And so the reason why I'm asking that is I'm looking at this and trying to figure out if the district could go out for another bond.
So the district could go out for another bond in the future. If the question is whether the tax rates would decline enough to make up the difference between a current bond and a, and a new bond. The answer to that, it'll be about 10 years before, it's basically a Measure 2002D, I believe, that is the one that has enough tax rate to it that would influence the tax rate enough in order to put another bond on top of it without seeing an impact on the tax bill.
Correct. So that's what I'm asking. So that based on this, it would be at least 10 years in the estimation, just based on.
Yes, because in 10 years, the 2002.
It's not impossible, but it is likely, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just for clarity, that chart only refers to Measure R and trying to figure out how soon we would be allowed to access additional series of dollars. So that's the point of that particular chart. But there are other charts that show all of our bond measures and how they stack up to create the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Then another question, which might be, I don't know, I'll just ask it. Do the ed specifications need to be updated now that we're at a five-year mark?
We could continuing to look at the, the educational specifications. Certainly some things came to light during this process where we were able to meet with considerable number of people about what spaces were identified. So there is room for that. I, I would hesitate to do that before we have identified what our, our next project is. CDE requires us to have site specific or project specific educational specifications for every project. So we'll have to do some level of update, no matter what project is identified. And I think we could more easily wrap both of those together and hopefully get more bang for our buck out of the process.
Okay, thank you. On page 11, your pricing has, there's two questions on the pricing. The first one is, has this taken into this, has this taken into account skyrocketing inflation? Or does there still need to be another cost update? And the reverse of that is, is there ever a time, I'm really thinking of 2008, when there was a recession, when prices actually did go down? I think.
So it is a moment in time when the estimate was done. And Ms. Mihia, if you use the date of the estimate, but it is aging now. It is probably eight months old. Since we had this information, seven months on the estimating. But with the economy, as you know, with the inflation rates are up, there is a possibility though that it will come back down again and we could see some savings in future years. But that's all, you know, guessing what's going to happen in the future. But I would say, you know, the estimate as it is today, certainly would have to have some adjustments to it to reflect current market conditions that have considerably changed.
And it's likely to go up rather than down, correct?
At this moment in time, I would probably predict that it would go up.
Okay. Would you please explain why both projects may not be able to run simultaneously?
Part of it has to do with cash flow. So as we move forward, we have to determine what scale of project we're looking at. So if we're looking at two smaller projects, then we probably could do them simultaneously. But if we're looking at one large project, we wouldn't have enough cash flow to be able to commit to a contractor and be able to go under contract because we wouldn't have the cash on hand to be able to complete the project, which is a requirement of entering into a construction contract.
Okay, got it. Is this a time for me to ask about other critical needs at other schools or should I wait?
Possibly if let us finish the presentation and you can ask those.
Okay, I think I'm good for right now. Thank you.
Any other question? Tessie Phillips?
I believe it was the last school board meeting where we had a conversation about racism and inequity in this school district. Was that the last meeting? And our administrative staff went to a conference and learned or realized that we are doing, and I'm paraphrasing, little to nothing to really confront racism and inequity in the district. Did I remember that correctly?
Yes, on that survey, I rated us overall, not at all.
So every high school in this district has been rebuilt. And somebody will probably slap me on the hand for saying it this way, but every high school in this district has been rebuilt, other than the two that serve the poor colored kids. And now we're being told after we went out to bond and told the entire city of Richmond that we were going to take care of Richmond. Finally, we're being told that that can be done. So my question, Dr. Hurst, is what is the plan to confront this blatant act of racism? Blatant act of racism and inequity.
I think that's part of why we're here tonight, just being very transparent with everyone. I I think the the plan or the presentation that was laid out just kind of shares the reality of. What we have available to us in the funds, and I think. I think the initial conversation even prior to I was here, I think there was a thought that it could actually happen. One of the things that I pulled out of the presentation was on one of the slides that just talked about the cost estimate. And market, the reality of the market prices as well. So I think there was certainly intent in the initial conversation to both communities. That that's exactly what we would do. However, our current reality. Doesn't allow us to do that, which is why we are here having a conversation to present an option. Or options to the board and then get some direction. So that is the unfortunate situation. I understand exactly what you're saying. Around the adults and the kids. But I think the reality. Before us is, you know, what do we do with the funds that we have? Given the situation that we have as well with our our two schools.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions right now.
Tracy Smith Paul.
Thank you. The impact that buildings have on student learning. Please talk about the impact that buildings have on student learning.
So we know that buildings have a variety of impacts on student learning. There is direct research that talks about. Basically, the simplistic things of what make us all human and what we function well as a human. So. As we go forward, there there are studies that show that people perform better, both in office and school environments. That are have good air quality, that have the right thermal comfort, that have access to daylight. That have views. That you feel safe in, and those are like what I clump together in that that realm of just meeting our basic human needs. Beyond that, there are the less measurable components. Of what was talked about during public comments of being able to accommodate. Technology easily to be able to have the tools in place. The building is one more tool in the tool chest of learning. And so if you don't have the the proper or the. Required electrical and technology components, it's always makes just using the other tools you have in your tool chest more challenging. Which can impact learning. And then the final piece is is another part that was also discussed tonight, and we did hear throughout this process is the pride factor. And and just being. Feeling valued, feeling that you're in a a happy. Nurturing place and and those are again harder to measure. But anytime you go into a building, you can feel what that building is trying to tell you and. And we strive with every one of our facility projects to. To make sure that that message that comes forward is is one that's that's appropriate for learning environments.
Thank you so much. And then is there someone that can speak to the safety impact in the location of these two schools? We know that we have Kennedy High School and we have Richmond High School. How easy, how easy is it for a kid that is? Zip coded to go to or. Their homeschool is Kennedy. How easy is it for them to then transfer over to Richmond? And it's a safety issue, and that's the reason I'm asking. Dr. Hirst, you understand the question that I'm asking? Okay, is there somebody there that can speak to that?
I'm wondering, I know we have Mr. Booker here on Zoom. I'm not sure if Mr. Booker, if you heard the question, if you can. Respond from a safety perspective.
Um, excuse me. If I got the question correct, what is the impact if you transfer someone from, say, a Kennedy to a Richmond R or vice versa?
So what's yeah, so what's the safety impact, right? We have these two schools and they're located in two parts of Richmond, and there's a real safety impact. I used to teach at Gompers Continuation High School back in the day, right? There's a real safety impact. Putting kids in schools, there's there's a, it's a, it's a chess game, right? You have to know the kid's background, the kid's history, and you do that. And know the outside kind of influences to make sure that they're in the safest environment. Mr. Booker, can you speak to the fact that that has to be taken into account when we talk about these schools? And why?
Yeah, the the obvious concern is territorial beefs and people living in certain areas. Where they can't associate with other people in different areas. One of the major concerns that have been that has been historic in Richmond has been. The north going to the south and vice versa. So those present real problems. Because although those beefs are those concerns. Maybe in certain areas, they then tend to go to the school sites. And these school sites, Richmond being primarily North Richmond and Kennedy primarily being the south side. Monterey Pines or Kennedy Manor, Crescent Park, etc. So those, because of those beefs. Kids tend not to go to those schools because of the the issues that they have in their. In their neighborhoods.
Thank you so much. And then Ms. Hooper, you talked about that there were the architects who were kind of during at lunch. The architects went or the team went into the classrooms, the team had kids at meetings. Do you guys have data that you can share about how many students you actually reached at each site? So how many students did you reach doing the lunchtime duty? How many students did you reach going into the classrooms? How many students did you reach at these meetings, like a compiled data for each site?
We do have that data. The architects are on the line, so if you would like, I could bring them forward or we could release that. I don't know if they'll know exact numbers off the top of their head, so we could also release that as part of the documentation after this meeting.
So I would like to know, I would like to know numbers and kind of percentage, right? Like ten percent of the school, two percent of the student population, like I would like to know. Actual numbers, if they have actual numbers, if they kind of did tally marks and how many kids they talked to and percentages. And then you kind of hit on this, but I would like to know, Dr. Hirst, if you have anything to add. How far away are we from what we want to offer kids? From our curriculum, our A to G curriculum, right? How far away are we from what we want to offer kids to what we do offer them? But cost of the boundaries of facilities or old buildings, or do you understand my question? Like, we want to offer. An array of. Classes, but we don't have the room, right? Like, we we may not have the room in these schools for band, right? Or for a robust band, right? So that's a, that's a barrier, right? So we can't offer exactly what we want. So how far are we from what we want to offer and what we can offer based on facilities being the barrier?
Just for clarity, are you asking from a facilities perspective? How far away are we or from strategic planning?
So I would think that they kind of go hand in hand, right? Because if we don't have the. Facilities to have a whiteboard or a projector or to have an outlet in the room, then we can't have a computer lab, right? Because that has to have the electric, the electrical foundation. So it's a little bit, facilities create barriers, right? So if we don't have the facilities to to have a computer lab because the facility is too old and the wiring or whatever. Then then we can't, we create a barrier from having a certain group of kids able to be. Technologically advanced, right? If we want all kids to have experience and exposure to music, but our buildings create a barrier to where kids are unable to participate in music. Because the buildings don't house them or they're too hot or two kids are choosing other things, then that creates where they don't have the experience and exposure to music. Which studies say advance them in life. So how far are we from what we want to offer? Or what we do offer at other schools and what we have at these two schools?
So I can answer that from a design perspective, specifically about strategic planning. And I think. Just to be very transparent, we're this year off to really knowing what. Our school district is going to look like, just reimagined. So I think I shared with you the process that we are at, and we are. Kind of stalled right now until we have that opportunity to meet with the board during another retreat to really look at the mission, vision. And then some of the graduate level profiles, that really drives the conversation, the vision as part of the reimagining. I think the second part is the conversation that we're engaged in now around educational equity. Across the district. So what does it look like across the schools? So again, that's a design component of the strategic plan. And then the conversation that needs to happen with every single department about how do we get there? So once it's approved by the board and we've reimagined. What does it look like in every single department that's going to get us to our new vision, mission and core values? So one of the things that we have shared all along that that process will be complete by the end of this year. So from a design perspective, you know, to the strategic plan, knowing what our district could be. Will be at all of our schools will be through the end of this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hirst. So what we're doing is we are in our strategic planning. We're saying this is what we want WCC USD to be. This is it. This is what we want it to be. And this is everything that that. Everything that that. Houses pertains to, everything falls under that umbrella, right? So. Under that strategic plan, one of the things that falls under that umbrella is what do our kids need to have when they graduate, right? So one of the graduation requirements, what does it look like at the end? And then once we determine that through process and discussion and community involvement, once we determine that, then we have to look at and see, okay. Are we able to offer that to every student? And if we're not able to offer this vision to every student, how do we get there, right? How do, and part of how do we get there is how do our facilities match up what we're giving them, right? Because we're talking about social justice in the strategic plan, we're talking about equity in the strategic plan, we're talking about voice and agency in the strategic plan. We're talking about climate and we're talking about safety. So how do we make sure that every student in the district, the twenty thousand plus that we have. Are able to hit this vision? Am I understanding that correctly?
Absolutely. I think part of what you're saying is that conversation that I mentioned briefly about. How does it live in each department? Like, what is it going to take from each department to to really get us there? But some of this also is financial resources and human resources to really make it happen. And I think that ties back to a conversation that we're engaged in right now about organizational goals, superintendent goals. And really, one of the high priority goals is around staffing. I think we all realize that we're not going to get there if we don't have the appropriate staff. So I think that's part of it. So one, the expectation of us meeting that goal is going to be or has to be a priority. But then also we'll have to look at resources. I think. Once we reimagine our district and we look at what we want to be, the real conversation is going to be, how do we acquire? What are the the entities that can help us with the resources, especially since we don't have those resources, financial resources ourselves? So that's, it's a tall order, but we're going to have to work toward that to really realize the vision. So staffing has to be a priority and then financial resources to really get us there.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hirst.
Reading more questions. All right, we go on with the presentation.
In addition to the priority school rebuild discussion, there were also district-wide initiatives that were identified. In the original bond language. And one of the elements that we're all acutely aware of, especially after the recent heat wave. Is the heating and ventilation across our schools. So we we did conduct a heating and ventilation assessment focused on thirty five school sites. Thirty two of which do not have air conditioning spread across the entire campus. There were over a thousand pieces of equipment assessed and inventory. Most of the units are beyond their serviceable age. Additional requirements. For a full replacement project. So if we chose to add air conditioning to all of our. Schools that do not currently have air conditioning. It's not that we can just put an AC unit in every space and we would be done. Unfortunately, we would also need to look at our electrical service. Because it does increase the electrical demand that these buildings require. And once we add an an air conditioning unit. Anytime we do any architectural project on any of our campuses of any sort of scale. We are required to do accessibility improvements as well. So those would would stack on top of the cost of the air conditioning itself. And potentially, depending on where the units were placed, we might have to also do structural changes. If we tried to put the units on the roof, for example, because that would change the weight load that's on top of our building. And would cause the building to need to be at least evaluated, if not strengthened, to be able to handle that load. So when we're looking at this scale, obviously it it's massive. And so thirty two school sites, most of our school sites have an individual unit for every classroom. So you start doing the multiplication and you can see that how the scale quickly becomes large. If we were trying to do some sort of combination of fans and potentially air conditioning units on second stories. We were estimating approximately twenty five million on the low end. And then doing something close to a full replacement of all of our heating and air conditioning units. We would be closer to a hundred and forty million for these campuses. And so we realize that that is a huge range. But we are bringing this forward as we're bringing these other components forward to say. We have to make decisions and they're hard decisions about how best to allocate funding. And knowing the full picture seems fairer to the board than trying to bring forward something that's focused. And not realize that there are additional impacts. So another component that we have heard and has continued. To be voiced is concerned concerns about safety and and strengthening our. The safety of our all of our campuses, especially involved with single point entry. We we continue to implement single point entry when we do any new projects that involve office spaces. And there has been a variety of of smaller fencing projects, but there there are additional. Requirements, and if this wants to be a district-wide initiative, that does require funding. And there are different ways or different points that we know we have as far as closing gaps and fencing. Adding or changing gates, replacing smaller fences with taller fences. And then with the single point control, depending on whether we're trying to funnel people through the office. Or do a a single point with cameras and electrified hardware. All of those require changes to our existing facilities. Finally, we also have the technology. The bond funding in the past has supported. The matching funds that are required for the E-rate projects. So E-rate helps and improve. And enhance our infrastructure for technology. So we're looking at our data backbone. We do have to have a twenty percent match to be able to access those grant funds. Um there's also a request from the data uh or the technology department about a second data center for resiliency and disaster recovery. So those are additional um projects, all of which are um our needs that that really don't have an alternative funding source. Uh and so one thing we have to look at and and one thing we're going to bring forward in the question to the board i- is what what do we do about these other um the other needs? We also have student housing. Um so our districts in transition. So typically, when you look at um demographic data and this this data was completed by Decision Insight, which is also known or has been bought by Power School. Um that you often will have areas of towns that are either growing or declining uh depending on the age of the homes and and whether there's development or things. When we run a uh analysis of how many schools are going to change over ten percent of their population that that's projected for their enrollment over a ten-year period, uh you normally don't get half the district. Um you also normally don't get that evenly almost split between schools that are growing and schools that are declining. Uh so we have a variety of stories that are happening around our very large district and different regions of the town. And one of the questions is why why do we have this much of a variance? And part of it is explained through the expansion of of transitional kindergarten. Uh so transitional kindergarten is itself in a transition. Uh right now, uh there are several months of four-year-olds who qualify for transitional kindergarten. As the years go, the next couple of years go by, more and more four-year-olds will qualify to be able to be part of a transitional program. At the moment, this is a voluntary program, uh as well as kindergarten being a voluntary program, although there's many talks in the state about making that a mandatory program. And so that's putting an upward pressure. The downward pressures include lower birth rates and as well as movement out of state. Uh the final upward pressure, though, is development. Uh and this data, again, is from our twenty-twenty-one study. Uh but you can see across the coming years, our biggest amount of developmental growth in student generation rates is for the Kennedy and El Cerrito neighborhoods. Um however, we do know that there has been uh since this data was uh created, additional uh developments that have been improved in the Pinol and Deanza feeder patterns. Uh so we continue to watch this in the up to the twenty-nine year. We we see that uh Kennedy has the most growth in their feeder pattern. However, um we have additional developments that have not been scheduled. And so that's what that beyond means, is that they're known developments, but they have not been scheduled. So instead of losing them, they put them in the out years so that we are aware uh that they most likely will happen. It's just a question of when. And so that's when you see the green dot at the top um for El Cerrito. And so the developments that are included in this particular study are highlighted on the map here in red. Uh so those are the planned developments uh that were, like I said, included in this study. However, we do know that there are additional uh at least two additional um larger developments in Pinol and Deanza uh feeder patterns that uh will appear in our next year's study. So that being said, coming forward, there there are going to be desires for transitional kindergarten, especially because it is a specialty type of space. Um we currently do not meet the demands of our kindergarten in specialized spaces. So adding transitional kindergarten is only going to um exasperate that. Um but moving forward, we need to keep these needs lists in mind to uh develop what we could uh feasibly do within our measure R resources.
So that leads us to the recommendations for tonight. Um we're bringing this to the board um to try to make decisions on how we're moving forward with major R. Um and so the recommendations, as as stated, are to invest in Kennedy and Richmond High Schools, reimagine, reengage our architects to form a scoping and but three to form a scoping and budget for each of the campuses to bring them within the constraints of Major R is one of the options. Uh adjust the scope for the Kirkland East Project for Stige to improve its existing facilities. Um recall the existing scope for Stige is currently to relocate them into portables and tear down uh one of the buildings on campus. Um and then evaluate district-wide initiatives such as safety, H V C and technology and bring back needs and recommendations. And bring back the overall scoping back to the board for authorization for budget. And that concludes our presentation for tonight, and we'll take some questions.
Yeah. Patricia McFaul, did you have?
I do have questions, President Christian. I didn't thi- I just didn't know if we were going in order. If we're going in order, is trustee Reckler first?
Yeah, so we'll we go, we go in order.
Okay.
Uh Mr. President, is there a limit to how many questions each trustee may ask?
That's what four questions, I guess.
Four questions. All right, uh trustee Reckler.
Okay, thank you. On page sixteen, for additional safety project requests, is there any dollar figure at this point in time?
As far as the dollar figure, we don't have that yet. The assessments are still being done by our safety office of all the school sites. As soon as those assessments are in, we'll be able to evaluate what those uh needs are and be able to put a dollar amount to it.
Okay, thank you. I would like to go to page twenty so that I understand this. And this is your school uh student generation graph. So this is growth in expected students or growth in expected families.
This is the student generation rate that would be students.
Okay.
But this is cumulative, so um every year it builds upon itself. Uh so there's not, for example, in the beyond years, two thousand more students. It's it's adding up the ones in the previous year.
But if I'm reading this correctly, at some point in the beyond, in El Cerrito, you're expecting two thousand more students.
Correct. That is across the K twelve. That is across K twelve.
Do you have the ability to define beyond?
We do not. As I I was stating in the presentation, it the developments are identified uh in various stages and if there is not the market conditions to be able to develop a development, they won't develop it, right? And so uh they have not given timelines to the city. Um so there isn't a hard and fast way of knowing of when they would move forward with these various units.
Okay. And then finally, if this is a time to address critical needs, so we used to have this big, long list of critical needs in the schools, I think over Collins. You know, Stige, Highland, I mean, we have some facilities that are in desperate, desperate need of some attention besides what we're talking about now. Where do they fit into this scenario that we're talking about tonight?
Currently, those other needs are not factored into the major R discussion this evening, these dollars. The prioritization of the schools were really Kennedy, Richmond, and Stige at this point in time were for the board direction. Um there there are critical needs that address some of those sites that you mentioned. Uh Collins and Shannon, as an example, have some dollars remaining that will be going to those sites out of the twenty-sixteen master plan, and those are in the progress right now. But there is nothing to address the sites beyond what we brought forward tonight.
Am I done or can I ask one more, which is out of all the other pots of money, M R A developer fees, R R M, all those little you know, is is there stuff in there that could address future?
So so to answer your question, yes, we we do have a different project list. Those funds are very limited, though, um that we currently are receiving that between the allocations uh that go for staffing, support staff, supplies for the current uh sites. There's very little that go into capital improvements beyond that, but we do out, we do have a plan for that. Um there are funds within our capital fund, Fund Forty, that we use for other capital improvement projects, and we prioritize those by need, by site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. How many of the projected students for the Kennedy family of schools are actually zoned to attend El Cerrito High School? You understand the question? Every child that lives in the Kennedy family does not attend Kennedy High School. Not just out of transfers, but because some of them are not zoned. So, for example, the kids at Washington. So you're saying that you're projecting these numbers in the out years in the Kennedy family of schools, but everyone who lives in the Kennedy family does not go to Kennedy by default. So my question is, how many of the children who are projected, the increase in the Kennedy family of schools are actually projected to actually attend Kennedy? If they were to go to their homeschool?
If they were to go to their homeschool. So we use the actual physical boundary of the high school as the basis of how those get split apart. So while, for example, since you brought it up, um Washington, Washington is zoned to go to um Korematsu for middle school, but back to Kennedy for high school. So they would be considered within the physical boundaries of the Kennedy feeder pattern.
But they don't, and everybody knows they don't. So my question is, how many of those kids are actually slated in reality to go to Kennedy? And if you don't know right now, you can say, I don't know.
Well, the the answer of whether they go to their homeschool or get transferred to a different school is is projected in a different way. Um so there are four different studies that I that the demographers do. Um two types of study and one uh and and two types of models. So they have a conservative model and a moderate model. And then they also have a resident versus enrollment. So in the resident versus enrollment, they look at what our current transfer rates are versus where you live or where a student lives to where they will intend to go. Um and there they use the percentage of um what we're currently capturing as far as um number of students that they uh that live in our boundaries but go to another school. They use the percentage of what our current migration rate is um to be able to determine what they project out forward. Uh what I'm showing here is a residency rate. I do not have the transfer rate um or the enrollment version uh because they don't identify the development growth versus just the standard growth in that way in the demographer's report. However, you can somewhat delineate that out depending on how you compare the resident report to the uh enrollment report.
Okay.
And just for clarity on all of this, we are using the um moderate model, which is appropriate for facility planning throughout this presentation instead of the conservative model, which is more appropriate for budget and finance. Um just so everybody knows.
Thank you. Just a note, um Dr. Hurst, the conservative model, I think it will be helpful for the board to actually see it. I think it would also be helpful for the board to get the numbers that I'm talking about parsed out. Um because if we're making plans based on what is projected out into the future, um we should be as accurate as we possibly can. And the kids over in Washington, my understanding is they do go to El Cerrito basically as long as they stay in the D L I program. And I think they all stay in the D L I program so they don't have to go to Kennedy. So I don't think the numbers are necessarily accurate, and I want to know out of those projections, based on what we are currently doing, who's really going to go to that school? My second question is Kennedy is under-enrolled now, and it has been that way for a very long time. Other than these projections that I heard, which are not in my mind nailed down, other than those projections, what makes you think that Kennedy is going to have sixteen hundred students?
For clarity's sake, uh both master plans were set at fifteen hundred per
Or fifteen hundred.
Per um school. And I we were taking into account the tenure model for enrollment, which does factor in the transfer rates that we currently have across our district, uh which showed that Kennedy um would have additional students that wouldn't quite get up to the fifteen hundred, I believe. It was more like twelve, um but also building a school, a brand-new high school to an absolute full capacity the day it opens, when you have a residency that is significantly higher than an enrollment, um did not seem prudent. Uh we we often see additional students coming to a school that has uh been rebuilt. Uh and so trying to find a good balance um of what seemed appropriate um between the number of students that would live in the boundary and the number of students protected to go to the uh school made the fifteen hundred seem like a good number so that we would also have a buffer. Um one of the things we have to realize when we're talking about a secondary school is that our capacity versus our utilization. While everybody thinks a hundred sounds like a really good thing, right? If we're at a hundred percent capacity or utilization, then we're fully utilizing that school. That rarely happens. Um a hundred percent utilization in a secondary school where we have a master schedule um and depending on which level of block and period you have. is, is very difficult to achieve. So oftentimes, because that means not only is every room filled every period, but you are also filling every seat within every room. And we rarely have that level of control on our master schedule. So it's, it's complicated to get up to 100% utilization. So ideally at a secondary school, if you are comfortable and if Mr. De Leon was happy in making his master schedule, he would not enjoy trying to figure it out at 100%. 80% would be a much more doable master schedule process.
What's the standard utilization rate?
Uh, for whom?
The standard would kind of be a standard. I'm not trying to be
No, and I, I'm not.
In, in school construction for secondary, is there a standard utilization? I would assume, for example, you would not intentionally build a school with a 40% utilization rate. So what is the standard?
It would vary depending on which type of demographer you talk to, but ideally as far as a target capacity, it would be 80%. It could go up to 90% and it would be challenging to get that, but you wouldn't necessarily have to be making some sacrifices that come when you have to go any higher than that.
So you're saying, so I understand this, that the standard is to intentionally overbuild schools? Intentionally?
I don't know if intentionally overbuilding schools is the correct.
Well, just so I'm clear. You're telling me that the standard is to build schools where you know you're only going to fill eight out of 10 seats? That would be a standard utilization of 80%. That's what I just heard you say. Did I hear that correctly?
That is what you heard.
So the standard is to overbuild schools by 20%? That's what you're saying? If you need to go and look into the standard question, that's okay.
No, it, it's difficult because we think of capacity as a fixed thing, right? Because we think of our buildings as a fixed thing. We think, well, we have this building. This building has been sitting here for 15 years, so it has one capacity. The problem is it does not have one capacity. It has a multitude of capacities. It has a range of capacity, right? So every time our UTR contract changes, we have a different class size that's possible. Every time we create or move or add to our special education offerings, our capacity changes. Every time we have a CTE program that requires a different type of thing.
I'm sorry, you're answering a different question. I am simply asking you, I understand that the number of children in a classroom can go up and down depending on many things. That's not what I'm asking you. I am asking you, when a school is built, a secondary school is built, there is a utilization rate. According to you, there's a standard utilization rate. You said it's 80%. That would be eight out of 10. Desk filled when you build the school, that that's what you're shooting for. You're telling me that that's an industry standard?
But that is also
It's just a yes or no question. Is that an industry standard or not?
I believe it is.
Based on what?
Based on the different demographers that I've worked with throughout this state.
Mr. Christian, I asked four questions. If there's additional time on the backend, I would love an opportunity to ask additional questions.
All right, appreciate it. Tracy Smith-Phole.
So Ms. Hooper and Mr. Freeze, on slide 20, the title said that everyone, I'm paraphrasing, everyone except Deanza. Did you already explain why not Deanza and I missed it? Could you give me that explanation again?
So at the time that this development study was produced, there was no growth or developments planned in the Deanza feeder pattern. Since then, I do, I am aware of an additional development that is planned, but it did not make this particular study because it was not conceived of or in the place where a city would know about it when this, this study was completed.
Thank you for that. And then when you guys talk about the future, right? What schools are going to look like in the future, students, how many students are coming to the schools in the future? Do you take into consideration things like we're an open transfer district, right? So people can transfer to any school they want as long as they have transportation. Do you take into account zoning, which we talked about just a minute ago, right? Like this, these feeder patterns are zoned to go to, and I can speak really clearly about Hercules and Pinole, right? So in Hercules, we have three elementary schools and one middle school and one high school, right? We, we want to create vertical alignment, right? Everyone goes, starts in Hercules and graduates out of Hercules through vertical alignment. Now, we may, we know that that may not always happen because we lose kids to other schools and other types of schools. When you guys are talking about that, are you looking at charter patterns? Are you looking at schools that the kids kind of jump borders? You know what I mean? Like they jump from Hercules to Pinole, or they'll jump from Kennedy to El Cerrito. Like, how do you take in those numbers? Can you give me a little bit more detail about that?
So again, it relates back to how the number of students and, and demography is, is some level of a crystal ball, right? And so we don't technically know for sure that any amount of student is going to show up next year, right? Or for that matter, 10 years from now. So as the, as the numbers go further out, they become less and less real. But what we do know is what has happened in the past. So what the demographers often do is they look at the past and they say, okay, I know child X lives in this house, which happens to be in this feeder pattern for elementary, middle and high school. And I know they go to Y school. And you do that across the district and our demographer did geocode all of our students. So they had access to every student's address and where that student went, right? And so as you take those two numbers and you compare them, you find out what percentage of students attends their homeschool versus attends another school. And when you look at that data, you take the percentages that come off of that, and that's what gives you your migration rates. So they create these migration rates of across our districts so that they know historically who went where. Now, the hard part is, in the future, is that going to continue? Is it going to continue at the same rate? Does, and, and we all know that the popularity of different schools wanes and waxes depending on a variety of, of potential variables. But that is how they produce the differences between their models.
Okay, so that's what our demographer does, right? When we hire a demographer, that's what they do. At the district level and at the facilities level, do you guys go deeper into the movement, right? Do you go deeper into the root causes? Do you go deeper into the historical patterns that you see in the district? Like we've lost X amount of students from middle school to high school in this area, right? To consistently, right? We lose this many, or we see this many transfers from this school to that school on average. How deep do you guys go into that kind of root cause analysis on what the demographer gives you? Am I being, am I being clear with that? Okay. How deep do you guys go?
So from a first facilities perspective, we don't necessarily pursue that line of questioning as much as our transfer and retention offices did. So I was working closely with that office to help them understand our demographic projections and what they mean from a data perspective, and they were looking into the root causes. So I would have to yield to that department for additional answers on what they do with the demography data.
Okay, Dr. Hurst, do you know how your facilities, how your facilities team works with your transfer and enrollment team to then go together into those deeper root causes about, A, why do we lose kids from one school, from one one area of school like secondary to, or elementary to secondary? Two, where do we lose them? At what point, right? Three, if we lose them because they're going to charter schools and did by creating K8s, are we increasing that to where they stay more? How deep does your central office go in working together to come up with some of those answers, right? Because it, it makes a difference, right? We want to increase enrollment and we want to make sure that we have capacity, which is facilities, right? But we also want to look at the financial aspect on it. How often or how deep do they all talk together? And I, I ask this because the historical decisions, decisions have current and future impact, right? So the historical decisions that boards have made before us have current impacts and future impacts based on what we do now, right? What we decide now is going to have a future impact on the students that come after us. So I'm trying to get a very informed set of information, right, to be able to make some clear decisions about not only now, but in the future. So how, let me repeat the question again, because I kind of walked around it a little bit. How deeply involved and how connected are your offices, your different departments when talking about overall student housing, student enrollment, student facilities, student impact? How much do they work together?
So I would say before Marin left, they were deeply involved and he was meeting with all departments and he could answer and produce those responses to you immediately. Right now, we are in transition. We have a, a person that's working in that office right now. So I couldn't say how deeply those conversations are happening right now.
Okay, thank you. And then President Christian, I do have a question for Mr. Freeze. Mr. Freeze, the last meeting, we did an adoption of resolution 2223-19, authorizing design, build, procurement and construction of CAL shape assessment, design and construction at various sites, right? And then under that, it was, that was talking about HVAC too, correct? Oh, that was. Okay. So that was talking about HVAC too. That was money that we got, right? We got some money to do this particularly for that type of, uh, let's see, that type of, uh, project, that project, right? Does that cover any of the schools that you showed us on the slide to the 32 schools that you showed us on the slide? Is that just a little bit of money? It won't cover everything or it just covers the, where, just covers the investigation of what we need? Tell me, line up that for me.
Yeah, so the money we received for, for the CAL shape grant, what it does, it does not allow for improvements to your systems as far as taking a system that's a heat-only system and adding HVAC to it. So it doesn't pay to add air conditioning. What it does do is really about assessing your existing conditions that you have in your systems. And then adding new filters to them, CO2 monitors to the classroom, but it's very restrictive in those funds, but there, there are no improvements to upgrade them beyond what's existing.
So it wouldn't impact the 32 that you're talking about, because the 32 that you're talking about needs such extensive work that it's going to, it's going to take money that's not, that we did not approve with CAL shapes. Is that accurate?
I would say yes, the, the dollars from CAL shape are, again, are only to make repairs of existing systems. They are not to upgrade them in any, any fashion beyond where their current capacities are.
Okay, thank you for that. And President Christian, I don't want to go beyond my questions. I, I, I don't want it to stress you out at all, but we do need to make sure that everybody is asking the proper amount of questions because everybody's not asking just four questions. So we need to keep that consistent because it's not fair that you get someone talking to you when it's my turn to ask questions, letting you know that I'm going over. And I don't see that same conversation when other people are going over. So I would like it to be consistent. Thank you. I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Okay. Tracy, Tracy Phillips.
Um, I think that staff would like direction for the, from the board, so it may be appropriate for each one of us to comment on our thoughts about how we may move forward. And, and if I may, considering that it's, well, if I may, and I started talking, may I? Okay, so considering that it's 7:46, we're talking about $575 million and some very serious needs. This might not want, be wanted to put a two-minute timer on. Maybe you want to do, if you want to do a timer, it should, I think it should be more than two though, because of the magnitude. I think that people should be able to say what they need to say in five minutes. That would be my suggestion.
President Christian, point of order.
Uh, go ahead.
If you're going to do five minutes for, per trustee plus the student trustees, you're going to have to extend the time of this meeting. I don't have a problem with that. That's just the math.
All right. We're scheduled to adjourn at 10 o'clock since this would is already
No, we're not. Excuse me, Ms. Metropolitanarian. Trustee Christian, we are scheduled to adjourn at 8 o'clock. Is that not correct, Dr. Hurst? Was it not six to eight?
That is not on the agenda.
Point of order.
Excuse me, Dr. Hurst.
Trustee Christian of a point of order.
May my question be answered first? Uh, trustee Phillips, please. Dr. Hurst, are we scheduled to meet on 6:00?
Point of order. President Christian, the German on the agenda says 10 PM. I'm looking at the agenda. I'm holding it in my hand. Item E, that's what it says, 10 PM. It's, and it says we're scheduled to adjourn at 10:30. It's our normal thing. I'll read it. It says at 10 PM, any items remaining on the agenda that require immediate attention will be moved to this time. All other items will be tabled to another on the following board meeting. In order to make fair and attentive decisions, the meeting will adjourn at 10:30 PM. The meeting may be extended by a majority vote of the Board of Education, end quote.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. President Christian, point of order.
All right. Point of order. Go ahead.
Dr. Hurst, was there any indication given to the board? And I'm looking at my calendar invite. It says six to eight. So if the agenda says something different, okay, but was that, am I losing my mind or did it say six to eight?
You're not losing your mind. We did send out that message to six to eight. However, looking at the agenda, staff has to take ownership in that. It does say 10:30 on the agenda.
Thank you so much. Then I don't have a problem with everybody having five minutes. It, I'm assuming we lead, we yield to what the agenda says because that's what was publicized. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right. Thank you. And when we start When we start out, uh, with trustee. Oh, yeah, the student trustees.
President Christian. Do you want to then put their recommendation back up on the screen so everybody's looking at it as they give their comments?
So do the student, uh, trustees, Miles, and Sapanya? Okay. So they don't have anything. And now we go to trustee Rector, and then we go.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to start out by saying that measure R is really important to me.
Trustee, if you could wait for. Staff gets the timer so that we're fair to everybody.
It would be great if they could put the recommendation up as well.
So unfortunately, we may not have the recommendations up and the timer running at the same time. So. So trustee Phillips is going to be running the timer. Would you give everybody a warning, say it one minute and thirty seconds? Thank you, sir.
Can I speak now? I can? Okay, thank you.
Ah, go ahead.
Okay, so measure R means a lot to me. My name was on the ballot argument. To pass this. I passed it because I worked at Kennedy High School. And it means a lot to me to have done this for the district and to have raised five hundred and seventy-five million dollars. So I'm personally vested in this for many reasons, for the kids at Kennedy, for the kids of Richmond. The reality, though, is if you look at page twelve. The math, as presented, the math just doesn't pencil. So at the low end, these two projects alone with nothing else adds up to seven hundred and sixty million dollars. And unless you can pull a hundred and eighty-five million dollars out of the low-end projection. We cannot get to five hundred and seventy-five million dollars. So even if you take twenty, even if this is low or overestimated by twenty percent or thirty percent, we're still not going to get there. So you have to come back, because the math just doesn't work. And that's just math. So that's a reality. I also understand through this presentation that we probably can't go out for another bond for ten years. If I understand that correctly. So this is what we have for ten years. I have some, so one of my follow-ups for the team is, I do have some questions for K N N. Which is, is that a reality, that it would be ten years? And then I also have some questions for K N N around housing assessments. And the cost of housing has gone up. The amount of houses being sold has gone up and the amount of housing being built is going up. So to me, there should be a net positive in the tax dollars that comes from assessments. And is this true and does this do anything for us? So that's a follow-up from K N N. Because when we can go out again for more money is really important. If you've listened to this presentation and you can see how much we need. At the high end for just these two projects is nine hundred and twenty-five million dollars. So we are, the cost of building is outrageous. It is what it is. There are other very important projects that need to be figured into this, and one of them is HVAC. I don't think any of us really took this seriously, but you know, we had a few days of orange sky in the pandemic and we had a pandemic. So HVAC and the air that kids breathe is super important. And so while I'm worried about a few hot days, we're only gonna get more hot days as time goes on. What I'm really concerned about is smoke and particle. And how we operate schools in an increasingly hostile climate. And so I think there needs to be some real attention paid to HVAC. So I think a follow-up on that is super important. Offline, I will give you some information on these energy service agreements, which it runs on the solar type of thing. I don't know if it's applicable to our, to this reality. But um, I have somebody telling me that it's possible and it should get looked into. And we may be able to do it with a no pay, you know, so that would not require a hundred and forty million dollars of bond money. Okay, so after that, you have expanding TK. You possibly have Kinder. You have growth in all of these feeder pot patterns. El Cerrito is busting at the seams right now, so something needs to be looked at for there. And then you have critical needs for, you know, schools. Things are gonna break. We have school stege. I mean, ste- stege can't continue on the way it is. Something has to happen there. Um, and then you have all of these safety projects, which are important. We built schools in a different time. Okay. So all of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Phillips. Oh, trustee Smith.
Thank you, President Christian. Can you come back to me, please? Trustee Phillips can go ahead.
Okay. Trustee Phillips.
Thank you very much. Our construction program. Has done a lot of good. For a lot of children. But it has been unfair. The way it's been implemented. It is a travesty. That at. The end of this. The only two schools that have not been done are Richmond and Kennedy. It's a travesty and a tragedy for multiple reasons. It's a tragedy and a travesty because. They are our two highest need schools. It's a travesty and a tragedy because they are. Are most diverse schools, high schools in percentages of student of color. It's a travesty and a tragedy because they are overwhelmingly low-income schools. And it's a tragedy and a travesty because they've been waiting patiently. Because community has been waiting patiently while other schools around the district. With less need and quite frankly, less students have been built up. And now we're at a space where we have to tell these children. Uh, and tell these families um, that there's not enough. And I don't shy away from making tough decisions. I never have, and I never will. But I am tired of having to make tough decisions because of other people's poor decisions. I am tired of carrying that weight around my neck. From layoffs to facilities, to who knows what's gonna come next week. I'm tired of making tough decisions for other people's poor decisions. My recommendations to staff around their recommendations are these. Reengage architects to form a scoping and budget for each campus project within the constraints of measure R. I agree with that. One point two, adjust the scope of the critical needs project for stege to improve the existing facilities. I agree with that. And I would like to know what that looks like, though. So that's number one, one point one and one point two. Number two, evaluate district-wide initiatives to bring back needs and recommendations. Personally, I don't think that there should be any district-wide initiatives. I believe all the money should go to Richmond and Kennedy. And I think it would be a damn shame. If a hundred and forty million dollars is spent on air conditioning. But I guess, not that air conditioning is not important, but you know, to say, you know, all these other places get a new school. But you guys get an air conditioner. And that's kind of what I hear when I hear that. And I don't think that's wrong. They could all be hot in a new school together. And that's what's fair. And come back to the board. That's what I think should happen.
All right, thank you. Trustee Smith.
Thank you so much, President Christian. I think it's important to know kind of the timeline, right? So the board said concentrate on three schools. The board said Kennedy, Richmond and Stege. And the board said that with the understanding that. That would happen, right? Because that was a board directive. And then what happened was that the facilities team went out and they engaged the community. And said, okay, we're looking at Kennedy, Richmond. We didn't have conversations with Stege. But we had community meetings with Kennedy and Richmond families, right? And then with those community meetings and at any point, if I'm wrong, please let me know, Dr. Hurst. This is how I think that the timeline went. Um, or the story kind of goes, right? And then when we went out to those communities. I'm not sure if we said, this is what we can do, right? This is the scope of what we can do. I think what was said was, what do you want, right? And it's gonna give you two, it's gonna yield two different answers, right? What do you want is kind of, if you could have everything, what would it be? And then this is what we could do, gives you kind of the boundaries. I don't think that the boundaries were ever put in place. I think that does a disservice to the entire conversation. That's my opinion, right? Because I think that you're saying. You can have everything, but the reality that's known is we can't afford everything, right? Because at that time, when we went out to the community, we knew how much measure R was, right? It was five seventy-five. It hadn't changed. Then the community came back and said, okay, this is what we want. And they were two very uh, beautiful ideas. Of what the high school would be, what Kennedy would be and what Richmond would be, based on what those communities wanted. Maybe based on what others' communities got, but that's what they came back with. When they came back with those, it was said, okay, wait, it's gonna take to, based on the numbers that we have. It's gonna take too much to do both of those schools. Remember, we haven't even engaged stege community yet. It's gonna take too much to do both of those schools. Now, here's my question. Did we go back to the community once that was like, whoa, that's too much? Did we go back to the community and say, okay? I see what you wanted. We are unable to do that. Here's a budget of what we can do, right? Did we ever have that conversation with the community so then they can reshape the vision of what they want their school to look like? Based on those numbers. And if we didn't do that. Is the district willing to reengage the community at that level, right? Because I think that when you say reengage the architects to form scoping and budget for each campus, adjust the scope. All of that is leaving out community. Maybe it's just not on the slide. But I'm trying to figure out where we go back to the teachers, where do we go back to the students, where do we go back to the parents? Where do we go back to the feeder pattern parents that are gonna go to these schools, we hope? And say, okay, listen, this is what we have. We have five seventy-five. If we're gonna build both schools, we have to take five seventy-five and we have to divide it in two, right? If we take five seventy-five divided in two, this is what you can get for that. I'm asking if we had those deep conversations with community. That's my, that's my question. And Dr. Hurst, if we have not had those conversations, do we plan on having those conversations with community? That's what I would like to see brought back to the board on what's the plan to reengage the community in this discussion, right? Because I think what boards come and go, we've seen that. Three or four different boards have had hands. And there's probably more than three or four have had hands in what we should do with our schools. But the community is pretty consistent, right? We have alumni that come back and raise their kids in the same house that they were raised in. And they send their kids to the same school that they were at. We have teachers that went to the same school that they're now teaching at. There's consistencies that we find and we can build to that, right? We can build to the pleasure of the community if we're honest and transparent with the community, that this is what we have. This is what we can do. Dr. Hurst, if you want to take the last couple of minutes of, I know I have about forty-three seconds left. If you want to take the last couple of minutes and just speak to what I'm asking, I would appreciate it.
Thank you so much, trustee Smith Folds. So just um, to clarify and just back up just a little bit. If everyone remembers, uh, when we started the strategic planning process, starting with the visioning piece. Uh, this conversation about Richmond and also Kennedy aligned with that conversation. So if you remember, uh, we talked about the design phase. So that was the opportunity for them to like vision. Uh, and we took them through a template as well that would allow them to vision. Um, what those schools would look like. And again, just to remind everyone, this coincided with the same process. Where we were asking everyone or engaging in the visioning process. So yes, and then in the, in the presentation as well, you heard staff say that there was a design process. That coincided with the vision process. And then after that, we went to a cost estimation. Um, so that was the steps. And I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, um, Lewis or Ellen. I think the whole purpose then was to come back to the board and get some feedback. And then reengage staff, I'm sorry, family uh, and stakeholders at the school sites. Based on recommendations that we were getting from the board. So I think that certainly is our intent. Uh, to go back and to reengage, but I think we wanted to get feedback from the board first.
Before you go back to the community, and I'm restarting that time at thirty-two seconds, before you go back to the community, Dr. Hurst. Your goal is to say, okay, board, where do you want us to go? One school, two schools? Stege, what do you, HVAC, what do you want us to go first? So then we can go back to the community and say, these are the boundaries. This is what we can do. That's what I'm hearing. Okay.
Correct, man. We wanted to get that feedback from the board first, get direction.
Okay.
I think it was our intent all along to get direction and then go back and engage internal and external stakeholders. Absolutely.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure that that happens. Also want to see what two point eight million looks like in stege that we talked about at our meeting. We had two point eight million to go to stege. I want to see what that can be done. What can be done with two point eight? My timer just went off. I am complete.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. For me to go, to go back and just, just look briefly. Stuff has to be done, right? And um. And equal. And so, so we gotta. I want to see Kennedy and Richmond, you know. I want to see Kennedy and Richmond, you know, get something, not just, you know, they got to have something. So so got to go back and do what it takes to make it happen. So. That's it. Adam C. Comments from the board.
Well, basically featuring agenda items, we just did comments. So are there any future agenda?
Are there?
You have other comment. Okay. He wants his time. So how much time are you giving for each person on this side?
What would you say? Three? Two minutes? Two minutes.
And so this would include comments and featured agenda items. Is that correct?
We go order trustee recommend.
Thank you just for some closing comments. I just wanted to thank you. Or is this just agenda items? Comments, okay. So I just want to thank everybody for their hard work in our schools. I've been out in schools. There's just a lot of great, exciting, wonderful things going on, dancing and art and engaging instruction. It's really been fun. So I want to thank everybody. I want to thank our administrators and our teachers. And I especially want to thank Barbara Jellison and the food services team. Unfortunately, last week I wasn't here and I missed this terrific presentation, which I'm so sorry about, but I watched the Zoom and it was great. And I really want to thank the food services team for all they do. Spent most of my career in food service and you know, it has a special place in my heart. And I also, I'm hoping that everybody had a reflective Indigenous Peoples' Day yesterday, Monday, and took some time to think about our nation's history. I certainly did. And I'm just, if you didn't, I'm just hoping everybody takes a few minutes to reflect. Thank you.
All right, trustee. Um, trustee Smith-.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hurst, this is where that moonshot thinking comes in, right? This is where you look at everything and say, all right, if we've already paying these people to go down to Sacramento, why are they not telling us that they're going to pay for TK buildings, right? Or making sure that we can put TKs and kindergartens in everywhere, whatever they want. This is where I would like the moonshot to come in, right? This is where I want the, wait, the 7-Eleven committee, right? Let's see what they say, see what we can sell, figure out how we can get it all done and done to the way that it should be done, right? So I would like my direction, and I'm only one person, and I'm, one person cannot direct the board. But Dr. Hurst, I implore you to bring back the great, right? If we do this, this, this and this, we can give every kid what they deserve because that matches our strategic plan. And that's what I'm here to do, is to hit that vision. And the way we hit that vision is I'm going to give you the moonshot thinking, right? I'm going to say, board, if you can trust me to go down this line, every kid is going to get what they deserve. Everybody's going to have the, the facility that they need. And environmental justice is going to play a part in this. Social justice plays a part in this. Race and equity play a part in this. I would like you to be as creative and innovative as possible to change this district for, because too long, kids who deserve it haven't gotten it. And all kids deserve it, right? So when we have some kids get it and some kids don't, we're doing a disservice to all kids. Because sooner or later, another kid's number is going to come up, right? So I want to make sure that we are equitable in our planning, we're equitable in our thinking and we're equitable in our implementation, right? So that means we're looking at everything. So bring back it all. Bring back what you can do for Kennedy and Richmond and Stige, because that's the board directive. That was the first part of the board directive. And then bring back and let us know the facilities, what's going on in all of our schools. What's happening in our facilities in all of our schools? That is my time. Dr. Hurst, I would like this also, President Christian, Dr. Hurst, we got to bring facilities back on the agenda. We need to talk about it more and talk about it in detail. Thank you so very much. I am complete.
All right, thank you. And trustee Phillips?
Thank you. I want to make three points this evening. First, Kennedy. Nobody thinks Kennedy is going to have 1,500 students. Not you guys, because I heard 1,200, not the demographer. So while I do want to see Kennedy rebuilt, which is something that I voted for, it needs to be built or redone or renovated, or whatever words you want to use to the scope of the students it is actually going to have. And there's no way to know the exact number, which is why we have to look to what the demographers are saying. The 80% utilization rate, overbuilding a school intentionally, I don't believe that that's a standard at all. And I don't believe that anybody does that, except us. Which is why we have built up all of these big ass schools all over the district in places that don't have enough students to actually fill those schools in the communities that they're actually in. I'm going to do an Oprah Winfrey. I know what I know. You have to do these projects simultaneously, because if you think $575 million is not enough now, it's definitely not going to be enough in five years or six years. The projects have to be done at the same time. The last thing that I want to say about equity, and this is not about facility funding, it's about funding for schools. We actually have to look at how we allocate funding across this district. Because just like in the facilities program, on the academic side of the house, the majority of the kids are in Richmond and San Pablo and those kids are subsidizing education throughout this district and have been for years. And it's not right.
Yeah, Dr. Hurst.
Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff. So first, Mr. Freeze, thank you so much for putting in the time to bring this presentation forward. Really appreciate you, sir. I know we've had many conversations about this presentation. We've been waiting, you know, a while just to pull it together to present to the board and to the community. So thank you. Ms. Mihia Hooper, thank you so much for your expertise. I want to let you know that I do appreciate you. And thank you for coming tonight and sharing this work and the research as well. I wanted to just share with the board as well that the staff has done precisely what I've asked them to do in a difficult situation. I want to go back to the initial conversations when I first got here. I've been very consistent in laying out, reimagining this district and visioning. I asked staff, Mr. Freeze and Ms. Mihia Hooper, to engage in a process along with ed services that allowed them to reimagine. They did exactly that. After they reimagined, then they did the cost estimate. And during that time, this is where we are right now. We found out that we're in a situation where we have a number of needs and not enough money to do it. And I think trustee Rattler said that very well. Very tough situation. What I don't want us to do is to blame staff. I want us to honor the staff for the work because they are working hard. So I just wanted to just share that. And then finally, I'll just share with the board, I heard you loud and clear. Thank you so much for your direction. And honestly, that's exactly what we were looking for, direction from all of you. We will take all of your direction and then come back at a future time with a different, another presentation. But thank you so much, staff.
Uh, the next board, October the 18th, the next board meetings, October the 18th and
President Christian.
19.
President Christian.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Before we get off this meeting, Dr. Hurst, we talked about, just give me one second, President Christian, with leeway. We talked about being able to talk to each other and kind of debrief when we're doing it. I would be remiss if I didn't bring up a couple of things. And this is the time to do it because I want us to make sure that it's fresh in our mind. One, people ask more than the allotted questions, period. We did it. We need to make sure that we did it. We need to call everybody out on it. I talked about that before. Two, the side conversations that people have not in the microphone is not okay because we are supposed to be able to hear what's going on in those meetings. So that's the second thing. The third thing is, President Christian, I want to make sure that if we, and I know you're going to stop me in just one second, so give me just one second. I want to make sure that we are living up to the decorum that we talked about in our retreat and that means speaking kindly to everybody. So I just want to make sure that we hit those three points in the parliament hearing when she sends our report, she can be sure to hit those three points as well. Dr. Hurst, I'm complete. President Christian, thank you for the leeway. I'm complete. Board, I know we can do better.
All right, thank you. And that's it.
You have to close, or adjourn at what time?
The meeting is adjourned at 8:21 PM.